This, the planning commission meeting on Wednesday, June 9th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Sure. Let's go in the order. Mr. Baxendale? Muted and no camera. Brian will come back. Ms. Penniston?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Ms. Shockley?
Here.
And Mr. Meglio?
Here.
We have five.
What did I miss? Oh, Bri- okay.
Brian's there.
Okay. On the agenda, I'm going to change some things around because some things are going to require more discussion than others. So I'm hoping the quick ones will go first. I'm going to bring up the DPW special appropriation first. I mean, if everybody read the material, the 180 Ks because they had to reroute drainage and whatever for the neighbors, for the, for the neighborhood.
Madam Chairman, if, if yourself or the commission has any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer. You have myself and Vanessa Valadara is on the line as well. If you like, I can give you a brief overview.
I, I, I think the paperwork said it all. So I, I, I think we're good. I, unless the commissioners have any questions of this appropriation? Anybody have any questions? All right. So I put forth the resolution here to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tammy? Okay?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Let's move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the commission, I appreciate it. Have a nice night.
You too.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to take up the, I say, I think, I'm, I'm wrong. I want to take up a B subdivision 3655. Anybody on the line for that one?
I am, Madam Chairman.
Okay. When I, go ahead, Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, and I represent the applicants A1Z7 LLC and Mountain Development LLC. If, we also have Manny Silva on the line and he is screen sharing the survey. The project, the proposal that is before you was a re-subdivision of three lots to create five B resident zone lots, all of which fully comply with the B resident zone requirements in terms of lot frontage area and the developmental circle behind the front setback, as is noted in the compliance table. The parcel today has a single family residence that you see Manny is circling. That would be removed and then each lot eventually would be developed with a new single family dwelling on each of the lots. There are no sidewalks or curbs that exist on this side of the street today, but my client will be installing sidewalks and curbs. And in addition, street trees will be installed in, in, on each property in accordance with city zoning, excuse me, subdivision regulations. And I do know that staff made mention of some concern about the compliance of those street trees. So we will adjust the installation, what is proposed to meet staff's suggestions and requirements. So there are no waivers of any subdivision regulations necessitated by this or requested by this applicant. Each lot is at least 6,250 square feet, which is required. Each lot is at least, has at least 50 feet of frontage. And as I said before, there is a 50 foot diameter circle behind the front setback on every lot. Manny, I think that's, if you could show this, is that the subdivision map? Yeah. Does anyone have any questions at this point? Okay, hearing none. We have submitted the application to the various CAC agencies and that is Fire, Public Works, Fire Public Works, Water Pollution Control Authority, and South Norwalk Electric and Water. To date, we've received the sign off from the Fire Department and South Norwalk Electric and Water. A request to extend the sewer to service all of these lots was submitted April 6th to the Water Pollution Control Authority and Public Works. We are awaiting those agencies to respond and provide us with any comments or information that they need. The last inquiry I made of both of those agencies was last Thursday and then again today. So at this point, I don't have any updates as to what the status of that sewer extension request is, which I said was submitted on April 6th. All of lots will be served by city sewer and water, hence we need to extend the sewer line. Since there is going to be development of the lots, a stormwater management report has been submitted and that was undertaken and prepared by Rose Tiso, particularly Mr. Silva, who is the professional engineer on the project. Mr. Silva, would you mind at this point just going over the stormwater management system that is proposed? And in addition, while he is preparing for that, the property owner and developer, Harin Jali, should also be on the call. If Mr. Jali is not on the call, he was just having technical difficulties. If you have any questions of me at this point, I'd be happy to answer them. But if none, I will then turn it over to Manny Silva to go over the stormwater management system and report with you.
Hey Liz, just a second. On the trees and, and on the, because this distance wasn't, doesn't comply and the natives plantings versus, so it's all being taken care of.
Both of those will be adjusted accordingly. So native species will be proposed and the distance requirements will be met. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Sachi, could you let us know how many bedrooms these houses are proposed to be and what the market price range is?
You did, Liz.
I'm sorry. I don't know what the market price is at this point. We haven't gotten that far. And I suspect that Mr. Silva will be able to answer the question on how many bedrooms. I believe there are three bedrooms, two car garages, but I'll leave that, those details to Mr. Silva to answer. The only other thing I wanted to mention before he takes over the microphone is that neighbors were notified of the submission of this application on May 20th. I have not received any inquiries, but I believe a neighbor did come in to look at the file and did not express any opposition to staff. If that's incorrect, please correct me, but I have not been contacted by any neighbor in connection with the submission of this application. Okay, Mr. Silva?
Hi, my name is Manny Silva, a registered civil engineer in the state of Connecticut, partner at Rose Tiso and Company. I also have here my, the person that, that civil engineer that prepared the drainage report and I'll turn over that to him, but I just wanted to go over kind of an overview and continue what Mrs. Sachi was outlining to the commission. So just to get kind of your bearings on where we are with this project, this is the, this is the existing house here, 176. It's right behind the field for the high school. And then we have a self-storage, queued smart self-storage across the street and then the railroad tracks. And I'm going to go back to the plans. As Mr. Sachi, Attorney Sachi detailed, the lot or the project is made up of three existing lots. And as you can see here, there was like about 11 historical tax lots that were joined to make these three lots. Next, we have our subdivision plan. Again, we comply with all zoning regulations with the circle and the setbacks. SP1 here you see is our site plan. Basically, we just put some houses here just to see, to, to give you an idea of what kind of house would go on these lots. Obviously, individual homeowners may build them a little bit differently, but this is the compliant house that would be, could be built on these lots. Again, we have some stormwater controls. Steve will detail on the numbers. So basically, we have an open uncontrolled drainage that's coming off of this hill right now where the house is. There's no stormwater controls. It just comes out into the street and to the existing catch basins here and here. Our, so what we did is we have individual stormwater controls for each individual lot. As you can see here, all this water from the roof and the driveways gets collected and then put into a four by four underground chambers, which are 36 lineal feet for each lot. And that water will be allowed to filter and infiltrate into the groundwater and recharge the groundwater instead of discharging to the city system. Next, we have during construction, we have our soil erosion control plan. Basically, what this is, is a plan on how to, while we are building the site, we're doing our excavation and things of that nature. How we are going to protect the road and the adjacent properties from siltation or any kind of water raining down and then bringing any kind of mud or anything into the street. So what we have is anti-tracking pads at the driveway locations to knock off any mud off of any trucks that are coming in and out. We have the black silt fence around the perimeter, the downhill side of the property so that, that stormwater is filtered and the mud and sediment stays on our property. And then we, we also are protecting any new drainage structures like our trench drains with hay bales around them. Again, this is what the silt sacks and inserts for the catch basins look like. Our anti-tracking pad is just large rocks or the large aggregate that knocks the mud off the wheels. And then here's our hay bale detail with the silt fence in front of it. I won't bore you with that. And then here's our landscaping plan. We did get the comments and we have already attempted to change our landscaping plan to be with, within the regulations or within the requirement that we got from the comments, from the staff. We tried to use some native species like maples, some spruce trees, pear tree. Again, we can work with staff on exactly what kind of species they want, but we, we did give a go to see if they would, they like the next, our revised set of plantings, our revised set of plant list. Again, we have some construction details, pretty standard sewer hookup, many manholes. We have to extend water main connections. We then, again, some more sewer details for the DPA and this is our cross section. So as Mr. Attorney Sachi mentioned, we have an existing sewer that terminates here. So we will have to extend an eight inch line, the manhole here, and then extend it in front of the three lot or the five lots. And then new laterals will be extended into the lot and just capped at the lot. And then once the development for the lot occurs, they could just connect into that stub. Pretty standard. Again, so now I'm going to turn it over to Steve Santa Croce. I'll pull up our drainage report. And then I'll have him speak to it. Go ahead, Steve.
Just, no, just, yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
What you said before was obviously each individual homeowner, the houses might be, might look different. So I don't know what that means. Does that mean that your, all this drainage and everything else that's being done, I would assume the lots will be sold, sold off or whatever, not to infringe on that, but all this drainage and, and everything else is being done for all the lots, correct?
Correct, correct. Each individual lot has its individual system. And if the homeowner that buys the lot has anything substantially different, they will have to re, they'll have to go to, the DPW will force them to analyze this one lot again to see if this system is adequate. So what we did is we put, if they build what we show here, then the, the systems that we show will be constructed and that'll be fine. If they build something smaller, they can build these systems and it'll be over, it'll be overkill. If they build something a little bit bigger, DPW is going to tell them to reanalyze the lot and redesign the system to be a little bit larger.
Okay, I just want to make sure to check some balances that, you know, you, you're saying one thing, then somebody buys the lot and they go crazy doing whatever they want. So obviously not the case, correct?
No, no, correct, correct. DPW and the staff will have to review and the individual building permits for these. Yep.
Okay, very good.
Yep, thank you. Any more questions?
And I don't know how technical you want to get because we have to do the public hearing next month. So I don't know if you want to get that far into the weeds for the preliminary review.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to get too far into the weeds of whatever, I mean, a public hearing.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Silver or Attorney Sachi, but once these lots are divided for a single family, is there the possibility that then they could be rejoined and somebody wants to come in and say, put either multi-family or multi-units on any one or combine them back?
Well, a property owner can always take two lots and consolidate lots and develop a consolidated lot. However, this is a B resident zone and it's limited to single family residential. Unless the city decides it wants to rezone properties from B resident zone to another zone that allows multi-family, these lots are limited to single family residential uses. But an owner could take, for example, lot one and two, if it would like a larger lot, combine lots and put a larger one family structure on that lot. But only B resident zone only allows single family residential.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, commissioners?
I'll just, I'll just going to turn it over. If there's no more questions for me, I'll turn it over to our engineer, Steve, and he'll go over the numbers for the drainage.
Before that, Madam Chairman, is it your pleasure to hear from Steve Santa Proch with more specificity on the store owner management plan? Or would you prefer to have that at the public hearing?
I myself would rather go to the public hearing so everybody can hear the numbers and all that. How does the rest of the commissioners feel?
I'm okay with it. Steve's here. I'm okay with it.
That's fine. Okay. All right. So we'll, unless there's other questions, Attorney Sachi, we'll just move this to a public hearing next month.
And the public hearing would be, I presume, July 14th, I think is the correct date. If I'm wrong, I will certainly check with Brian. And we will obviously send out the certified mailings to all the public, the adjoining and across street property owners in accordance with your regulations.
Well, that's what we're showing right now, July 14th. Brian?
That's fine.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. All right then.
The questions of us, we're happy to answer them. If not, we'll see you next month. And thank you for taking us out of order.
Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Flag sale has been taken off the agenda. Just everybody knows that happened this morning. They're looking to be on the July 14th agenda. Okay, so we've done that. So all we have left is the, well, on regular agenda, we have the building management construction of a new primary elementary school. Who's speaking of that?
I guess I start.
Alan Lowe. I haven't seen you in a while. How are you?
Hi, everybody. I'm Alan Lowe from City of Noah on behalf of, well, City on a Cranberry project. Before I start, this is part of the 824 requirement that we submit is part of the, the planning commission for review and consideration. We have the whole design team here. So I'm not sure how long you want the presentation to be. I mean, Mike, my Lesaso is our lead architect. And how long do you think it's going to take? About 10 minutes, 15 minutes?
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep it brief, Alan. I'm actually not planning on presenting. I'm just here for those questions.
So we are doing a presentation about 15 minutes. So, okay.
Go ahead.
You don't want to last all night, right?
Not, no, because the lights won't be on in the window.
We turned the light off as the commercial goes. Anyway, the city has allocated 45 million dollars for construction, new cranberry school five, like two years ago, two, three years ago. Actually, two years ago. And we have since hired the architect and a construction manager. We are in the, I would say this, 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 we are finishing, we are, we're actually in the middle of design development, I guess, and probably finish that by the end of this month. It's always interesting when we bring a project to the planning commission. Because when we bring it too early, a lot of stuff hasn't, a lot of design has not been fully developed. On the hand, we bring it too late, then any changes, the suggestion is that it's hard to incorporate. So it's always a decision that I have to make at some point in the process that what's the time to bring to the commission. So we decided to come now. Specifically, this project, to go here is to do a new school while the existing school is still in operation. We do have a large piece of property, but most of it is taken up by wetlands and trees. So we do not want to cut downwards and go where we cannot go into wetlands. So the architect team will go into more specific. The only area we can identify to build a new building while keeping existing building in operation is this area as these student leases during the little hour.
That's correct, Alan.
That's where we're going to put, so we've been working on this for, for over six months or so, I guess, or more than that, actually nine months now. So we've been, we're meeting with the school, school representatives, senators. And we also work with the common council and the board members and we have a building advisory committee established, me or council member and, and board member as well as teachers, principal, and parents to get to this point. So the project again is 45, $45 million and we're looking to go to business springtime next year. The project takes about a year and a half or so to complete, I guess, somewhere around there. We are scheduled to open in September 2023. Is that correct? Yeah. And so without saying anything else, I, it's a, it's a very exciting project for the community and for the city. And I go Lisa, I assume Lisa, you the optics or record to.
Sure. Thank you, Alan. So I'm Lisa Yates from Antonazi and Michael Lesaso is here as the managing partner. We also have Phil Katz from Stan Tech here to talk about the site in more detail. I'm going to have to stop, share and switch over to the site plan itself. So we are in design development right now. We're firming up the last of our planning and zoning decisions. We've been working with Brian Baker on that. This, this plan, which I started with the aerial because I think it helps everybody get their bearings. I have the existing building site outlined here. And, and Alan, I'll also look to you as we keep going, whether or not we keep going and also the commission can weigh in on that. As you mentioned before, so this, this site plan shows a portion of the site because the site is very large. It is mostly wetlands. It goes across the street a little bit, but the buildable area is really in this zone right here. The existing building occupies this portion of the site. And our proposed building is all new, 62,000 square feet roughly. And the, the existing building, I think, is around 48,000 square feet. The plan is to keep the building open the entire time that construction is underway, which is one of the reasons that this is our site. The, I believe, did you say the site was 33 acres roughly? But this, this, this is area is about four acres. We are introducing what we think is a safer circulation pathway for people using the site. This road here on the bottom, you can, you can see the, my cursor, I believe, is the bus drop off. And the parking in this area is primarily intended for staff. And then as we were working on this, this is a very park-like setting. We know a lot of people like to use Cranberry Park. We've been to the existing school when classes are getting out and there's a lot of traffic on Noah Lot Lane. We introduced this longer drop off loop for the parents and that should really help with a lot of that. The, the current site has a baseball field. And I'm going to actually get rid of the existing building for a minute there. It, the current site has a softball, baseball field over here, which also serves for soccer. So we're moving that function into the middle of this loop. This area is more public parking. There's a large plaza. This is the front door of the school. So we are doing more of the bringing the outside in for this, you know, very nice wooded site. We're providing good access for fire service, the building around all sides. This is a two-story building. This area on the south houses the more civic functions. Administration, cafeteria, gymnasium, and then the back half is concentrated in classrooms. Utilities out here are, we, we do not have gas, although there's a, there's a natural gas easement on the property, but it's a high pressure gas line. You can see it up here. But we are not able to use it. So we're, we're looking at alternative sources. And we're also going more electric with the building because of that, which is good from, it's a heat pump system in the building. Also, the, we have Phil here. I'm going to actually hand it over to him and I can take it back if we want to talk about plans in more detail, but we have septic on site. And that was a, a challenge and I think we're doing pretty well with it, but I don't, I don't want to use this whole presentation. So if you want to jump in, Phil.
Sure. Phil Katz, I'm a project manager at Stan Tech, licensed professional engineer. Yeah, this is kind of a unique site in that it doesn't, it's not served by the city sewer system. There's a septic field. It's located up in the upper right corner. If you point to that, Lisa.
I'm trying. It's, 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 here, I'll move it over a little bit. It's over in this area. Here it is, up in the.
There we go. Yep. So that's an existing, those are where the leaching fields are. There's a septic tank on, onsite and then the, the effluent is pumped to the, to these leaching fields. We're trying, we're, the system is in pretty good condition. We've actually dug it up and, and looked at it, looked at the various components. So those are in good shape. So we're going to reuse that. That's been reviewed and approved by the State Department of Health as well as the local department of health. What we're going to do is upgrade some of the components that lead to that leaching system, new pipe going to it. We're going to add grease traps to make sure that we don't have grease going into the septic system and then we'll put in a new septic tank. So all those components will be new and we'll reuse the existing leaching fields. So I had.
So Alan, unless you protest, I will take us on a brief tour of the plans. Okay. So these, these are our floor plans. The first, so when we showed you the site plan, north was up for these site plans, north is to the right. So this is the entrance I was pointing to before. I'll, I'll zoom you in and kind of walk you through. This portion of the building is what we're thinking of as the civic wing, which is something we usually do at high schools, but it's nice that it worked out this way for an elementary school. This gives us the ability to lock off the classroom wing and have off hours, events and, you know, sort of separate the traffic. We have a secure hardened front entrance. You, you go through the security raptor system of the school in through the main office before you're allowed to go in. The cafeteria is front and center next to our receiving loading area, which ties to the, the staff, the staff loop that we discussed before. This is the gymnasium and then administration, principal, the nurse is right there. And then we, because of the way this school is used, we think it's important to have, have it be flexible and modular. So when we were laying out the classrooms, you see these very regular rectangles. So this, this will enable them, you know, if they have to switch a section and, and add, you know, another classroom in a particular grade level, it becomes a lot easier. The, could the pre-kindergarten is being added to Cranberry Elementary School and it is down here. This is, this is kindergarten up here.
Let me, let me back you up. What does that mean if they have to add or whatever more flexible?
So for instance, we have right now, we have a main music room for band and we have a secondary music room for choral. If they need to have more than three second grade classrooms in a particular year because of the ebb and flow of population, this room's available to them. Similarly upstairs, we have the, the rooms that are shown here in yellow are regular classrooms. And this is, this is how the, the grant was brought to the state with this, this number of classrooms. And this is, this is how the, the grant was brought to the state with this, this number of classrooms per grade. But if, if flexibility is needed, this resource classroom is the exact same size as a classroom. So it allows them to, to, you know, have their needs be met during a particular year or in ten years if, if things change. And similarly down here, the science classroom is configured just like a regular classroom. We also, this is primarily, we have special ed. English is a second language and gifted programs down here. But even this classroom on the end is big enough to serve as a real classroom. So it's really, it's really just future-proofing the building. So, and in addition, you know, since it's a brand new school, we're following Connecticut High Performance Guidelines, which means that everything is sustainable and green and we track things and we use high efficiency MEP systems. And the building has a, a tight envelope. And see, technology throughout the building is fully modernized, you know, smart boards everywhere, great wifi.
What does tight envelope mean?
Tight envelope means a high R value, so lots of insulation. And we, we look at gaps and seals and, and that sort of thing.
I'm assuming it's all air-conditioned?
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay.
I buried the lead. It's air-conditioned. Go ahead. I could give you a quick view. I mean, this is, this is really, maybe I should go back to the site plan. This is, this is really sort of where we are right now. Let me pull this out of here. So Alan, again, I can, I have one more. I can show the two exterior shots.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So this is the view of the cafeteria. So you can see the entrance over here. We're using, we're using wood because, because we're responding to the park-like nature of the site and without sort of being too literal about it. But it's a, it's the kind of space where you like to be outside. So we like to have this feeling of bringing the outside in, which is why you see the glass. This glass is actually, it's entry-resistant glass. And also we're showing our security system component of blackout shades. I'm going to.
One of those we have is that we typically keep the building pretty cost-wise, very minimum in terms of the other building facade. So there are certain places, only certain area that we, that we are, we are willing to spend a little money to make the building a little more welcoming and attractive. So rest of the building, basically, it's a, it's a gray and brownish brick veneer. It's not, it's a, I think the massing is nice because the building is broken into little pieces. So just one rectangular building, long hallway kind of thing, the same height. It's two-story portion of it and one story. So the building just in and out. So the building had a lot of interest, but the, but the basic facade material, it's just brick. It's a, it's not very elaborate. It's a very, very basic. Again, the form is interesting. But the only place you spend money is, is at the cafeteria facade as well as the, the media center facade. So the only place that we are a little more glass and a little more interest, we include a little bit of a stone veneer, which is just a veneer. So to, to kind of bring those feature, the rest of you can see right on this picture, the two little kids behind it, it's very basic. So.
And this brick is a, is a, we have, we have a dark, very dark graphite brick that sort of lights up when the sun hits it. So it gets a lot of variation with, with sun and shadow. And we also have a cream-colored brick and, and here these fins, the details on the media center and on the cafeteria, we have stone.
What's with those little, little windows over there? What's that area?
These little windows or these little windows?
No, well, all the little windows.
So the little windows over here, this is the administration wing. And, and the little windows over here in the stairway. So typical classroom windows are six feet square. These are, I think these are three foot four square for offices. And then the windows in the stair, when you're in the stair, they form a pattern of light. So you see them all at once from the inside. You can't see it here, but this is a grid of nine windows.
So is the three to four feet, is that a normal size or, you know, you got offices, you can have a nice window? Is that?
That's not a small window. It, it sort of fills the, fills the office.
Three feet by four feet?
It's a three foot four square. So three foot four is a Masonry dimension. So that's, that's why it doesn't end in three, three foot oh or three foot six, because everything's an eight.
Hold on. How big is the window? Sorry.
This, these particular windows are three, three feet, four inches square. So I'm looking at four, forty inches.
Is that a normal size window?
Yes.
Okay. See, I'm thinking of that building in South Norwalk, you know, that's got, you know, great views and everything's got these tiny windows, Alan. That's what it reminded me of right now.
So I don't have them all shown here, but this is a more typical window. And these are six feet square. That most of the windows in the school are six feet square, which is better for a classroom. And most classrooms, all classrooms have at least two. Some classrooms have more. I can take you back to, I think this might be a good way to look at the window, the window situation. So you know, the, this, this space has one window. Most offices have two. Conference room has three. And then typical classrooms, you have two larger windows. And then some of them have more. When, you know, when it's appropriate, you go around the corner like this, this classroom with the four, six-foot windows.
Now, I'm just thinking as you mentioned, it's a park-like setting.
Absolutely.
I know. But then you got these, what they appear to be, little windows and if there's a reason behind that, I don't know.
Well, though, the reason behind it here is because of the scale of the rooms is smaller. In, in the classrooms, the six-foot window, we actually played with larger, larger windows. But six feet is, you know, for me, I'm, I'm less than six feet tall. I can, I can stand inside that window.
Okay. And I was looking at the windows that you showed before, the administration area.
They're, they're right over here. So those, and they're sort of an outlier. That's why I went back to the plan. And, and also the reason they're a little bit smaller is because there are private spaces that are right next to the front door.
Okay, Mary, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. I just, I have two questions. One, forgive me if this is a stupid question, but you basically talked about, I don't remember the terminology you used, but to be highly energy efficient, I wanted to ask, can the windows be opened?
We are still talking about that.
Because I would, because if the electricity goes, the kids are going to suffocate. I hope that we're going to have the option to have the windows open. School will have to immediately be dismissed if you lose the electricity and you can't open the windows. That's A. And then B, you talked about some of the energy issues are, is there any use of solar panels or anything else that will supplement the power supply?
Solar panels are planned for the roof of the building. We are, we haven't, we haven't figured out the delivery system, whether they will be part of this project or that we be worked with afterwards as, as a PPA, a power purchasing agreement.
Let me respond to both of those questions. It's a energy efficiency for the building. This is our experience. As soon as we was powered the building, within ten minutes, the school bus would there to pick up the kids. So kids didn't stay in the school at all. As soon as we lose power, the building is shut, is, is closed down and, and parents come to pick it up. And all, all the email goes out and, and the building part empty within twenty minutes. So the reason, the way, reason why we have a discussion about operable window and not operable, it's actually because of energy. The energy model that's established for today's building do not want operable window. And that is a struggle we are, we are facing. The reason, in order to make the building more energy efficient, the way the building is done, all pressure is being taken into the building through the mechanical system. It doesn't rely on the, on opening window to get fresh air. So this minimalist standard, this, this time of year, well, like a month ago, when, when, when the temperature is at fifty-six degrees, you get a hundred percent fresh air from the outside to save energy. So you're getting all the benefits. It's a lot of it is psychological, psychological about whether you have operable window. So it's a, it's a difficult decision process because firstly, it costs money to have offer a window. But on the other hand, when it's like five headquarters, we wanted offer a window. Every window we have, we put a, a device in it. So when the, when somebody opened the window, the mechanical system gets shut down because you don't want to open the window. And meanwhile, the building doesn't know how to react because now you introduce a different kind of environment from the outdoors. So it's a, it's a very complicated decision process. So we're still evaluating and figure what's the best way to provide the, 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 the space needs for, 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 for addressing the teachers' needs and stuff like that. We always, I always understand what we, but I always understand when, you know, when, when during the flu season, when, you know, when kids coming and coughing and sneezing, I want to open the window too. So, so we understand all those elements and we're still deciding right now. So, so we don't have to find a decision which way we go, go. But in terms of like, you know, when we lose, lose power, the school is closed immediately. So, so it's not, it's, you know, student, it's not, it's not really a concern. It's emergency lighting. We get the kids out, the first thing we do when there's power.
Are you getting input? Alan, are you getting input from staff and parents about what their preference is about windows? Because.
We have a, we have a, we have the building advisory committee. And I think more teacher wants it than, than not having. It's like city hall, you know, I mean, these window technically they open but we don't, we don't open them. The bigger window, the, the bigger the problem is for us because I don't want to keep going on, but bomb lines, we often see those issues. We look at this for every school we're doing now. This, 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 this is a, a, a long discussion with every school and every, again, it's today's mechanical system, the control we have to manage the system. The energy efficiency, it's actually not have the window open. So I'm not supporting, I'm not arguing against it. It's just, it's just something that continue to evolve in the industry about what's the right thing to do for school. So it's a complex kind of discussion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Brian.
Alan, may I ask where the emergency exits are on the ground floor and the, on the first floor and the second floor?
Lisa, can you, you can show on the, on the, on the plan.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the whole question.
Was basically where the, where are the emergency exits on the first floor, ground floor and on the upper floor?
Sure. Okay. So the entrances both serve as emergency exits. There's a, there's an exit from each stair. So there's a stair here with an exit. Steer, a stair here with an exit. And there's a separate, the exit here is separate from the stair. There's also, because the cafeteria is a large space, it gets a secondary exit because the gym is a large space, it gets two secondary exits. On the upper floor, you know, obviously you need a stair to get out of the building. So the stairs are here, here and here. And these two stairs exit directly to the outside. This stair, as I had mentioned before, you go out and you go out through the door.
The way these doors are controlled nowadays, all these doors, it's a, that's not her, it's egress, egress only. So don't, they don't give a handle or hardware to open the door from outside. Only place that has it is probably near the playground. And there will be a fob there. So a teacher with a fob can have it unlock the door. Otherwise, all these doors, for security reason, there's no re-entry capability to, 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 you know, for somebody to open from the outside.
Yeah. When we design, our default is that the door has no hardware on the outside and it's exit only. And then we go through the plan with the group and, and with the board of ed. And we carefully determine which ones have entry capability.
And traditionally on the, on the first floor classroom, typically we would have doors on every one of these classroom for, for egress. But for, for, the only place we have is really for the, for the, for the pre-K because emergency situation. Five, we need to be able to provide egress for, for five, five, to take the kids out through, through exterior door.
Right. So if before we, you know, new buildings, new school buildings are required to be sprinkled. And that gets us out of the requirement that we have doors at all of the classrooms. However, because pre-K, the children are so young, the code has a special provision where they do need the doors.
I just want to go back to the energy question about solar panels. For all our school building renovation, like Jefferson School that we're working on now. And so it's Cranberry and all future projects, solar panel is part of our design requirements. The difference is that we may not do as part of capital project. We are do, we are a lot, like similar to Polnis, we build a, on the school. We build a building, rented a building, we are, we built it to accept a solar system. And we do a separate process with the board of education. What is called a power purchase agreement, basically the city go out and, and a long-term lease from a private developer to put the system in. So if that those contracts for owners are being signed, I think it's this week, so that they can put the system in towards end of summer and be operable in, in, in the beginning of school. It's a, what it does is that it reduces our capital cost because we're not buying it. And also the cost is, is supported by C-RAT, which is, I think it's, it's an energy incentive program by, by EverSource. As well as these developer, the solar developer gets tax credit, energy tax credit, which the city is not entitled to because we're not a taxable entity. So there's some certain financial benefit, the private sector can do this. And then they put in a city building like a school and then we, we will pay for it through the energy savings. So it's a, it's a it's a different process implementing the, the, the full take system on, on our school buildings. But it's, it's the process that we are going through all, all our buildings. We only put it, full with pay panels on new, new roof projects only. And also structurally, there are issues on, on some existing schools, the city hall, we plan to do a city hall. But the structural integrity of building, it's very challenging in terms of coal back then, back in the thirties when the original building was put up. We cannot determine the, the loading capacity. So that's why we haven't done it in the city hall. So that's a long answer to a quick question.
Can I ask one quick other question? Is there any way to estimate what percentage of your energy needs might be met by the solar panels? Or is that not an appropriate, is that not a question you can answer?
I, I don't have to answer for you, but it will be, we, we, we know the, as we develop this project, we will know the kilowatt, the generated by system. And the, the projected energy electrical use, it's, it's probably known, probably about, well, I would say about two, three months from now, we will, we will have the number, how much electricity we're going to use. But then we have to look at the, the, the solar panel side to see how, how big the system we can put on this roof. And then that will determine what the ratio is in terms of percentage. So.
What's the goal? Do you have a goal, Alan?
No, I don't. A few things that kind of the strategy here is that we try to locate all the rooftop mechanical equipment to consolidate into, like group them together. To the extent possible, by have doing that, so scattering them, we give them more opportunity for solar panels. So those are things we look at, but it's really what we can afford, the space available to put on the roof. We also look at a, for Jefferson School, we actually look at a copper system. The copper, copper system financially doesn't make sense, but say if you do so, we have a Jefferson, we're doing a rooftop system.
Alan, this is Tammy Langos. Have you looked into adding a generator? So on the rare occasion that the power does go out, the kids could stay in school because it would seem to me it's very expensive if the power does go out, that you've got to bus everybody home. And are the, are the lines into the school buried?
Generator is, it's something we look at for many, for, for all the schools.
Can I help a little? The.
Sure.
This, since we have to have sprinklers, we looked at water pressure for this site. And it, it's borderline and we're required to have a backup generator to operate the sprinkler system. And we're currently sizing this generator so it can, keeps, keeps the building from freezing and we power all of our emergency lighting. We are, and I'll hand it back to you, Alan, with that we're not currently sizing, yep.
We're not designing these, the school except the two high school. We're not designing all these schools to be emergency facilities. So the, the primary goal is get the kids out of the building. The second objective is protect the building from freezing. Today's building, like this building, is going to be so very energy efficient and it's going to be very tight. So we can, we should be able to keep heat a lot better inside these buildings with the. So we can, we should be able to keep heat a lot better inside these buildings through the winter days. One of the thing that we're working on, sim, on, I think it's on Jefferson. We're looking at, uh, when places we don't have a generator, when we renovate, we actually, actually put a transfer switch in. So we are trying to size these building for the, for the fun, for the basic electrical service of running the heating system. Well, let's say it's a, I don't know, um, I don't know whatever K W we, we're going to have for building. We try to size the building the same for the campus system. So that we can potentially bring affordable generator at different locations, different schools. And plug it in and run the building for, let's say, two hours and bring the building heat up to a certain level. And then we can go off for two days without, so that in, in case there's a peak winter days and, and we lose, we lose electricity for a week. There's a way to manage all these buildings, but not for occupancy, but just to maintain the building at a certain temperature so that, you know, so that we should get power back to the building and go out to operations. Uh, doing generate for every building is quite expensive to do. Uh, also required maintenance. And again, as soon as the building, it's a, you know, there's a power outage, all the schools are closed anyways, there's nobody's been building. So we had analyzed this, we are trying to figure out what, what's reasonable to do each, each one of these projects.
Hey Alan, um, couple of things. Go ahead, Tamara.
Yeah. Uh, this is Tamara Shockley. I'm looking at, uh, your security system. If a tragedy should occur in the school, how does your security system protect the children while they're in the school?
So we're, we're set up to be able to go into lockdown mode. And, um, one, which, um. These doors are set up to be locked anyway. Um, the entrance is hardened already. We were just talking today about, um, motorizing our window shades. So they would automatically close on lockdown in the spaces where we have large expanses of glass. And, um. While some of our, our systems actively go into lockdown mode. Most of the school is actually set up sort of as passively locked down to begin with. But the, the policy in Norwalk is that classroom doors are always locked. Just as, as a, for instance, that's one of the basics. We also. Actually, we, we just had a review this morning with Joe Rios. Who's your security coordinator in the city of Norwalk and we review the plans in detail with him several times. And, um, you know, make sure that he's comfortable with the way that we're protecting the kids in the building.
They are, they are very straight state guidelines in terms of security and protection. The glass and area of glass, it's, it's all protected.
Hmm.
Uh.
Right. This is ballistic. The entrance is ballistic. Right.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure we want to go through all of it, but I think if, uh, for some member of the commission wants specific information. And, uh, you're welcome to reach out to, to us as well as Joe Rio, who's the security. Uh, person for the board of education and, and there's a detailed development of. Security camera locations and how, how long does it take for a house connected police station in terms of, uh, you know, immediate response. And police car has four plans of the schools and stuff like that. So the number of items that's associated with building security. So I don't think it's the right place for us to discuss security for a school at this point, but. Be sure that all this, we not answering the question because we, we don't really want to talk about it too much, but they are where specific requirements. And, 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 and needs to, that we, we are incorporating every one of these building. So it's not, it's not arbitrary. It's very specific because there's certain responsibility. Well, modern liability, more responsible as, as, as a community that we are, we need to protect these buildings and, and the, and the students that are in these buildings.
Right. Even little things like every classroom door has, um, a, a very small window. The window is three inches wide and it's, it's made out of glass. It's hard to break. And it's set in the center of the door. So even if you had, were able to break this really thin piece of glass. And you had a very thin door, then then arm, you still couldn't reach in and get to the handle. And also we're going to equip every single door with a shade. So. That's, that's just, there, there are a lot of details that are like that, that are incorporated throughout, um, to make the building more natively secure.
Okay, Alan, I want to go back to the windows a minute as far as opening and not opening. I, I heard what you said and underlying it all, I'm hearing, well, you know, it's not efficient and. We're still talking about it and, uh, you know, how much efficiency is it going to degrade? By opening up a window, I mean, get fresh air. And I heard you about, well, the fresh air is being pumped in and stuff. In the best of all world, that's all good. Uh. I'm in favor of being able to open up a window. Myself, uh, the rest of the commission, uh, feels that way. And as, as you're discussing, and I'm looking at the resolution here that I have in front of me. Um, so I'm not sure about putting something in there, but, uh, I don't want that to be buried in the sense of. Well, it's the efficiency quotient and you know, the fresh air is coming in, um, through pipes and all that kind of good stuff. It doesn't compare to opening up a window. And, and anyway, uh, I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on that, but.
Uh, yeah, my, my only thought was just safety, you know, kids, uh, from, uh, K to, um. Five, fifth grade, you know, poking their heads in there or sticking their hands out or. Throwing things outside the window. I'm just looking at it more of a safety concern first. And I do understand what you all are saying about your thoughts. Didn't know Alan, which possible would be like a sliding, uh, movable window would be more like an awning style window. Um, some teachers sometimes put their own A C windows. I've seen that at Columbus school in the past. Um, so I'm looking at this for more, not just aesthetics, but more of a safety and a kid having their hand in there.
Right. It's a, a good point that on the first floor, we have entry resistant glass at all of the windows. And you know, if they're operable and they're open, they're not entry resistant. So if.
This question.
By entry resist.
This is more to Alan. Alan, based on your experience, because you have excessive experience with the, with the window functions. What are, what are your thoughts about, um, you know, the awning style or the sliding style window? Double hung, you know, kind of. No, 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 no. Yeah, I, I can tell you one thing. It's, it's going to be either, either, I, I think, uh. I've just, well, I forgot what, is it hopper? We, we.
Honing or hopper? Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, I believe, and then we need screening for it because, uh, you don't want bees and flies to come in and stuff. Uh, and I think we, we don't, we don't, I think it's a inside. Off, I, I can, don't, don't quote me on this. We don't, we don't open outward because. Some strangely enough, I don't see this problem, but some kids actually banged their head in there from the outside when they tried to talk to their friends and stuff. So we actually, it's a hopper in, I don't know what it is anyway. But the teacher doesn't like it because they can't put stuff on the window still. So it's, it's, uh, there's many discussions. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to, uh. No, no, Alan, I could have. They're just light windows. I do, but, uh, but it's a, it's a, it's a long discussion and debate. And at some point. I don't have a solution and I'm not pushing one, one way, the other. Uh, but it's just everything had to make sense. There's pros and cons, cons and this number of pros and number of cons. And I, at some point I had to make a decision on behalf of the city, uh, to make that decision. Uh, I know that certain school like Polnis, when they back in, uh, in the two thousand renovated, we have, we have, we have awful windows. So we continue that. Uh, but on other schools we don't. So it's, it's, it's a hot, it's a difficult, difficult thing to decide on. I mean, again, I, I prefer offer a window. But same time it's like people keep a window, open window, open middle of winter. And meanwhile, we're running heat and the window, the, the, the energy efficiencies go right out the window. So how do we, how do, how do you control that kind of stuff? So, and then we have putting devices in and all the devices fails and we got to maintain it and, and on and on. So. And I, I, I am very conscious of this issue of offer a window, not offer a window. I don't have a definitive answer. I'm not trying to. Be vague about it, but again, like I mentioned, there's many discussions about it.
Well, we lost Alan over there. So.
Alan wasn't the only one.
Yeah. I think he.
Storms coming by too.
Yeah. Um, I don't know where, where we are in the presentation, but Alan, I want to bring this up now. Uh, looking at the numbers, you got a big contingency cost in there. You got $2 million for contingency. Have you thought about, um? I, I, I think it's, it's a big number. And when people see $2 million of contingency, you know, on 45 million school. You know, it'll be eaten up fast. We say, oh, we got all that money. This is a delay. This is this, this and that. So have you thought about? Um. The, the, the incentive of, uh, coming in on schedule and under budget. And, and let's say is a million of that, not the two million, but one maybe. And, uh, all things come in good. You know, you split up the pie with the contractors and stuff. Any of those kind of incentives are talked about?
Did you guys see me?
Uh, just now. Yes.
Okay, um. This discussion came up probably like fifteen, twenty years ago. Uh, sharing, sharing, share saving. I think that's the industry terms about, um, savings. Uh, we do not do that. Uh, one of the reasons is that when we do these projects. It becomes very adversary between us and the construction manager. Um. It's, it, 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 in our view, in my view, it does not work. Um. All this money that's saved hundred percent comes to the city right now. So why do you want to share it? I, 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 I don't see a reason to.
What I'm saying to, what I'm saying to you is it never gets saved. Okay. We've been through many projects. Many years on the planning commission. Okay. There's always overrun, special appropriations and all that. I don't think I've seen yet that the contingency money goes back to the taxpayers. Okay. These are big numbers. So. Anyway, I, I think the contingency fund is too big and, uh, it's an incentive to overrun and, and. Whatever happens, whatever it is, and things always go wrong. Schedules always, uh, get. Uh, further down the road and cost here and cost there.
I, I, I think the contingency, we give it a five percent. Which is very reasonable. Five percent of $40 million, it's.
Yeah, it's like 4.4 right now.
So I mean, I'm not going to run the project less than five percent contingency.
Right. We have, we have hazardous materials in the existing school as well, which, um. We do our best to predict, but, um, when, when you tear it open. Things can, things are, things are found sometimes.
So there you go. You're already eating away at the contingency fund.
So it's for, 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 for things that are, are real. It's not like we. I mean, for items that are, we, 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 we will anticipate. That's why it continues. I mean, we don't use Polis. I think.
Anybody?
I think we can, I don't want, I don't want to type too much time. I think we can, we can, we can, we, I, I, I can come back another time. To show you some of the project where we are. When, when there's a residual funds, we never come back. And you don't see, you don't see the budget that we finished with money that remaining.
Yeah, we look at the capital budget and what's left in the budgets. Every year when we do the capital budgets, right?
Right.
Okay. So no, I don't want to, I don't want to continue this, this thing here. Uh, I would expect, uh, well, I, going forward, uh. I'm sure you're aware that planning and zoning, their common council is looking to, uh, you know, put it together. So. But I would propose to you that, um, uh, updates to this pro, to these big projects are. Should be, um, a standard, uh, you know, procedure to. Uh, bring planning and zoning up on, on what's going on. So. Anyway, what else you guys have? Any commissioners have any, uh, any thoughts here and questions? Okay. I don't hear any, I don't hear any, uh, any, any commissioners speaking. So Alan, do you want anything to add before we go to a resolution here?
No, no, uh, everything's fine. I think, uh, some of the, some of the comments and questions. I think, um, I have no, I, 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 I love the opportunity when you have a short agenda or something. I don't mind come back to talk about some of these, but projects. Where they, where they were and how they stand. It's a, you know, I've been here thirty nine years and, and, uh, still here because it's still fun for me. So I would love to have opportunity to sit down, you know, again, when you have a short agenda to talk about how project work and doesn't work and. How funding, it's a, it's put into a project and how we spend it, what happens to, with, uh, the state process in terms of approval and the auditing process. And most of these projects, all the school projects for last, I would say fifteen years, we always have residual funds in the account. And, and at the end of projects, it's like some of the projects, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. I think Polis maybe a million dollar left. All this money go back to the city. But at the same time, we have to wait for state reimbursement process. They are very difficult entity to work with. So as much as we be very straightforward, identify what's reimbursable, what's not reimbursable. They take different position in certain thing. That's why I leave money in all these accounts to protect that. So I think, again, I don't want to go into here in deep detail, but at some point in the future, anytime you, you want to interested, we can have a kind of open discussion and. How we manage this project and where, where we stand and how the, the, the challenges we have in terms of bringing these projects within budget. Um, and, and, and open on time. And I think we've been doing pretty well for all the projects. I mean, like Polis is quite a difficult project with new building and renovation, existing building and stuff like that. So, uh, we did pretty well and Jefferson, as, as of right now, we're doing pretty well as well. So again, each project is its own challenges. I'm not saying that what, what happened last project is to say what's going to happen in the future. But same times, we are very actively kind of manage all this stuff. That's why we have highest construction manager. This is our first estimate. There's also probably two more, I believe, before we actually go up to bit. So it is a long process for us. I don't want.
Hey, Alan, Alan, there's no criticism of your management skills. I've known you a long time and we go back and forth, right? So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. None of, none of that was, you know, projects this big, you know how they go and stuff. So. Yep. So, so, and then, yeah, and then, none of my words were meant to, uh, you know, towards you as you're, uh. You've been there a long time and you know how it goes and, and, uh, we back you up. Okay. So not a problem with that. I love to have you back. I say, well, I don't know who's going to be on the new, um. However, it, it turns out to be the planning and zoning and, uh, I, I think it, it will be beneficial to, uh. Instead of waiting to be invited, just get yourself on the agenda saying, just give an update on things and, um. You know, the, I, that's what I would recommend to you, suggest to you. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, friend.
Uh, so I'm going to put forth, uh, we have the resolution, uh, to move this forward and to approve. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Oh.
And some, I don't know who that was, or somebody speak up for the, for Diane over there.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Bye.
Any, uh, any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you, Alan and team.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay. So now we are at, uh, let's see. Discussion, I believe of other items, housing bill six, one, oh, seven. So we've talked about, or, uh, Steve, um, Flappin, as, you know, there were things going on in Hartford and, um. You know, zoning changes and all that. So, uh. Apparently the, you know, we briefly talked about accessory apartments at one point. So I asked Steve about it. So it's been approved up in Hartford, all those zoning changes, whatever all they are, I don't know. But cities have, um, can opt out, uh, you know, of, of certain things. So I'm bringing forth the accessory apartment regulation. You know, I, I, I don't know about you, we'll have a discussion, however you guys want to go. You know, people say to me, um. Cause right now the way it is, it's got to be attached to the existing house. It has got, uh, limits, you know, you got three years to wait to put a, uh, a kitchen in, I believe, and stuff and. You know, you're looking at the healthcare system and I've had people talk to me about. You know, they have a relative or a mother or both parents or father, whatever it is, they would like to take care of. They cannot do an apartment attached to the house. Why can't it be, you know, detached, whatever? So I asked, uh. So I'm putting it forward to you guys, I, that I, I would like to send this among discussion. But the purpose is to send it to the zoning commission. Um, so they can start the process of adopting what Hartford already approved. And it's, uh, uh, it's not that much tweaking that needs to be done to our own Norwalk's regulations. Okay. So with that, I'll open that up to you guys. What, what do you think?
Ryan, could I ask a point of clarification?
Fran, could I ask a point of clarification?
Yeah.
You're, if you're making recommendations that go beyond what was passed, is that something that can be done?
No, it's not going beyond what it, what it, what I'm putting forth is that, so Hartford passed this regulation where the the apart, except accessory apartment. And Brian Baker, jump in if I got it wrong, so that it's more flexible, if you will, than what Narwhal has right now. Flexible in the sense of it does not need to be attached to a present, to the, to the home. Let's say you wanted to put one in together and you have the space. Right now, it has to be attached to your house. The new regulation, which has been passed, says it does not have to be attached. It's got, so that what I'm putting for, I'm not putting anything different. What it is, is it's to accept.
I misunderstood. I got it.
It's okay. To to implement what Hartford approved with some tweaking on our zoning side. So I.
For, I'm for that.
But I would like to see something in writing. I'm looking at the legislation right now. So you're accepting a clause from the House Bill number six one oh seven that's been passed. I I don't.
I'm not accepting a clause. Brian Baker, jump in. What are we, what are we doing?
Something in writing what you're, what you're talking about.
Yeah, Fran, I sent you that, that memo with, I put your name as the signatory on it. Do you want me to share that?
Yeah, please share that.
All right, let me pull that up.
And does it refer to the bill? What, what paragraph in the bill is it referring?
All right, so if you can see that.
N commission. Amending Article forty two. Why are we looking at this, just this specific clause or this specific change in the regulation? And not the entire regulation, what they've changed? Why are we just, why are we just signaling out this particular regu- regulation? Dealing with accessory apartments?
Because I felt like bringing it forward, I've heard from people and with, to me, this is a, that to me, the the Narwhal, it's kind of onerous on, on people. I don't know what all of the regulations that were passed. I don't know what zoning is gonna do with all of the, there's, there's all different pieces of it. And I specifically asked about accessory apartment regulations. So that's why I'm bringing this forward here right now. And after talking to Steve Kleppen, if we could send something over to zoning to start looking at this. And if the commission so agrees to to adopt what Hartford has already done. Now, Brian, what else?
Fran, I'm not, I'm not supportive of this unless I get more information about accessory apartments. I'm looking at it in the bill, but I don't feel comfortable and requesting the zoning commission to amend a specific part of the bill that was passed unless I have further information about accessory apartments. Only thing I'm hearing now is that it doesn't have to be attached to the house. But there should be some other regulations to regulate accessory, accessory apartments.
The governor, the governor has signed.
I know that that's its law, but in order to implement this particular aspect of the law, there needs to be more information on how it's going to be done.
I sent, I sent you guys that, that memo. It was kind of like a comparison of what was passed versus what our regulations say right now. Let me pull that one up. Hopefully, this is the right one. So. You can go through this however, however you want to.
Well, I assume everybody read it because it was in the package, correct? Okay. So, Brian, I'm not exactly sure, Tamara, what you're saying and what the, what this memo doesn't cover, the one that Brian's got up there right now.
Yeah, so nothing that was passed by the state is more restrictive than what we have. Everything is opens it up a little bit more. And our, our existing regulations, you know, compared to other towns was, was more liberal than, than most. So really, the the biggest changes are, like Fran had said, that they'd be allowed in detached structures. Right now, they're only allowed to be within your, your existing single family house. And then, you know, other than that, it's just tweaking height requirements and and all, all those kind of, you know, issues.
But who does those types of issues, the height requirement and what the conditions are? Who would handle those types of issues? And shouldn't that be presented to us before we make a decision? What the requirements are?
Yeah, so, well, so the, the legislation lays out kind of your minimum standards that you now need to adopt or opt out of. So at, at some point, we're gonna have to propose to amend our existing accessory apartment regulation. So as of that process, it's gonna have to come back to the planning commission anyways, because we're gonna have to revise the zoning text. And I think Fran's goal was to support what the legislation had passed was and to kind of, you know, let the zoning commission know that they're supportive of the bill and that, you know, we'd like to do this sooner rather than later.
Well, why aren't we waiting until this is incorporated into the legislation, into the city zoning legislation, so that we can look at it entirely? Because there were other, there were other conditions of zoning that the state legislature looked at and passed. Why aren't we looking at that in the package? Why are we just, why are we just signaling this particular aspect out?
This is the B zone. I I'm looking at it, you know, there's other legislation for different zones and we're just talking about one part of it, accessory attached accessory units in the B zone. And they're probably attached in the B zone because the B zone is the smallest lot. You know, you can have a detached in an A or double A or triple A because they're bigger lots.
No, in Norwalk, it should be always attached. Right now, it it has to be part of the principal dwelling. And then we have restrictions on how much you're actually allowed to expand your house. You can't, your footprint can't increase by more than three hundred square feet if you're adding an accessory apartment. And then you can't lower your existing square footage of your house by more than, I think it's eight hundred square feet. And the max size that your accessory apartment can be is seven hundred square feet. So the legislation increases all those numbers and then allows it for all zones where you can have a single family house on your property, allows you to have a either attached or detached accessory apartment.
Because basically, the accessory dwellings are a key way of basically making more flexibility for families. For basically people in industrial zones to increase the living accommodation on top of their craft workshop or whatever it happens to be. And of course, clearly, affordable housing is more affordable. It is also in a good neighborhood, so. I understand we're not advocating for the whole, but it's good to put this particular feature out, which is where Norwalk definitely needs to move.
And and I know that a lot of affordable housing groups are emphasizing that this is one of the first strategies to start with. And Fran, I'm getting the impression that what you want to do is just get input. We're not approving or voting on anything. We're just discussing a piece of, of the legislation to start to think about how it might affect zoning. Is that correct?
Well, what I was looking for is for the things that Brian said, you know, like I said, I, for people with the, I I was, people have been talking about the relative and parents, okay, from, from that perspective, right? Brian is, is all those other things, which also makes sense. So by the memo that Brian put up first, we're really, we're telling the zoning commission to start looking at this. We're, we're not voting on, on any legislative thing. We're just saying, we, we, planning commission, okay, wanna look at the, except when, when zoning to start looking on how to adopt that, that we think, we, planning commission think that the Hartford language and all that is, is good, right? The more liberal, if you will, or the more flexible thing. We want zoning commission to start, to start the process of looking at the Article forty two and, and so on. That's what we're doing. So if we move it forward to go to zoning, it's a recommendation from planning commission over to zoning, saying, start looking at this, that we think it's a good thing for Narwhal. That's, that's where we are.
So just to finish the issue that tomorrow is raising, I, I, I agree. It certainly seems to be a, a big push that people are thinking about addressing housing issues in innovative ways. So it makes a lot of sense to me. But just to answer tomorrow's question, that legislation, could Brian just give us a quick sense of what other kinds of things we may be considering later?
Yeah, so the, from the original bill that was proposed to the one that was passed, it got pretty watered down, I guess, is, is the right way to look at it. So the, really, the only other part that we're that's probably gonna affect our zoning regulations is they put this different parking standard in for multifamilies. They, I think how they worded it was you would need to provide no more than two parking spaces per two bedroom unit. And then no more than one for a one bedroom or a studio. How, right now, our regs for multifamily is one point three spaces per unit across the board. So if you're putting in a two unit, it's one point three spaces. If it's a one or studio bedroom, then it's one point three spaces. And then we allow you to go down to one space per unit for your entire development if you provide some affordable housing or pay an affordable housing fee. So we're looking at that as something that, you know, might not make sense with how we do it. I think how our regs are right now are, you know, probably better. But that's something that, that's really the only other thing I think that I can think of that would affect our existing zoning regulations is how the legislation was passed.
So I'm just thinking to answer the question that tomorrow is, is that if there are other things that may need to be considered, it doesn't seem to affect this particular one. But if she would like to see the whole bill, that seems fine. But if we're just it does seem that it would be a good idea to move this forward. I think that to create some more flexible regulations for allowing, allowing more flexible housing around single family homes seems to be a very popular and reasonable strategy to move forward to think about affordable and flexible housing things, given changes in population demographics and also as a way to potentially, even though there's a clause in there which says there's no requirement for it to be affordable, I would imagine that it might create opportunities for some more affordable housing. So I mean, we're not approving as it is, but to ask for it to be moved forward, to be considered and discussed makes a lot of sense to me. There's a lot of interest in this issue and I think that Norwalk should start to grapple with it. We're not the ones approving it. But I do think it is certainly one strategy that a lot of communities are looking at to try to get more flexible and affordable housing. And so I I say, yes, please ask the zoning commission to look at it. But if tomorrow would also like to understand the larger context, I would ask that perhaps the information of the whole bill could be sent with, you're just indicating what areas you think might cause issues with our current zoning, I would be fine with that, too.
Mary, just let me a, address, I'm, there's two things. One, I don't know why we're putting this as a priority. There are a number of other issues that I'm looking at in the bill in relation to affordable housing, that to me has just a high priority. So my question is why this particular one? And I'm also looking at the specific section six. And my question, just questions are arising. If my neighbor puts in an accessory dwelling in their backyard, what are the restrictions? Because some lots are bigger than other lots. Well, that accessory dwelling affect my real estate value. So that there are just issues that need to be addressed in terms of accessory apartments and accessory housing, because it can go up to seven hundred square feet. So for me, I just think I need, I will abstain because there's just so, so many questions I have about this particular issue in particular. And then why are we giving this priority over the number of issues that have been passed by the, by the new, through the new legislation? So I'll abstain on this.
Tammy, where are you? Tammy Langaus?
I'm right here. My thought is that this is yes, you could say it one way, add housing options for people. I look at it as an opportunity for illegal apartments and that it's going to change the dynamic because once you put in the accessory apartment for your family member and then you talk about market rate and renting, they definitely will be rented, whether legally or illegally. And I think it has a very long reaching potential to change, you know, neighborhoods. Yes, definitely, it's nice if you can have your parents living with you and and not have to put them in a nursing home sort of thing. But my guess is that, you know, that, that, that add these accessory apartments to the back of their house, they're just gonna get rented out. And then there will be more parking. And even though, you know, they'll get a permit and say they only have to have one parking space, it'll be two cars, it'll be three cars, you know, it's, it's just gonna it's gonna change the character neighborhoods.
I personally don't I mean, I don't, I don't like to go to the negative all, all the time, because negatives will happen anyway as far as illegal or whatever. So I, I already stated my reasons why I was bringing this forward. Steve Ferguson, so whoever we, we haven't heard from Steve Ferguson, you there?
Yes, I heard everything. I share everybody's thoughts. Tamara's, you know, neighbor and backyard, more space, more parking, more cars. You know, personally, I think the idea is, is good, it's sound. People taking advantage of things is always, always goes left, you know, just from my purview and my own personal experience. You know, I think by us looking to this closer, we'll get a better idea, work with the zoning staff and, and the commissioners can see, you know, valuable approach to this. I would say you have some homes that have a detached garage behind them. You have some homes that have a detached garage on the right or left of them, based in the street. I'm not sure the landscape of, you know, B zoned homes. But accessory apartments are needed for families in law. You know, I'm, you know, I'm a little bit, I think my personal opinion is a little bit for it because of my, my parents and their age, you know. But it's just what it is, you know. I think we should just look closer into it. And I'm happy that, you know, Tammy's an, an appraiser, so she knows the, the effect that this could have, right, Tammy? And at the same time, you know, how it affects values of homes. We could make a decision here that could affect the whole town, particularly a particular zone in town. But, you know, I'm for moving it and to look at it closer. We're not approving anything. We're just, we're just doing a deeper dive, correct?
We're just moving it. We're just saying to the zoning commission, start looking at, we'd like you to start looking at this. Have no idea how it would shape out, you know, or what the so we already have accessory apartments right now. It already exists. The only big thing is that has to be attached to your house. So, and then there's a three year wait on, I think, the kitchen, whatever it is. Now, is anybody real think that, you know, people are waiting three years? I, I, I don't know. To do that kind of stuff.
Well, the way I look at it is, when it comes to these detached dwellings, there's three major components in that. It's, you know, digging a waistline from the dwelling to the road. Electrical, upgrading electrical, I, I think a permit is being pulled, just making these into small little apartments, whether it be plumbing, electrical, you know, infrastructure, you know, I'm looking at it from the whole, you know, the whole piece of construction. And what's lacking in these attached units, these attached garages or these attached sheds, I don't know.
So I came forth with this because, because like I said, people, I run into people that, for whatever the reason, so my the thought process was, you know, you have elderly parents or, or whatever, and you can't put a attached, but maybe with this, you can put a detached, and instead of putting them in a nursing home, you can, you can take care of a family member that way. Okay, so as far as all the, all that got signed up in Hartford and all that. Okay, so as far as all the, all that got signed up in Hartford and all that, and, you know, to, to put it all together, these are, towns can opt out, they can opt out of all the things that were signed in Hartford, okay? So this one here, we did touch upon it a while back, whenever that was. And for the reasons of the Brian Backs and Dale expounded and where I am from it. So it's not a, a big thing saying, why are we spiking this out? Why are we doing this and that? Simple thing of getting it to the zoning commissions, they started looking at it. Brian put together, Brian Baker, that excellent comparison of things that we could see where, what Hartford signed versus what it would take for Norwalk to take care of it. Now, those things usually start out in zoning. But planning can recommend the zoning and say, okay, we, we think that you should be looking at this. And whatever ends up being done comes back to planning commission. Now, I'll say this comment now versus at the end. The ordinance committee of the common council is going forward with, I'll call it the merger of planning and zoning. So that's going to be happening probably, I don't have any definites or any of that kind of stuff, but I would probably see it as towards the end of the year. You know, public hearing probably in the summer. And so what that new commission would look like, I have no idea. So we are where we are, I'm putting it forth. Those of you, also, I'll put it forth if you want to move it. I got this thing here, I've got a low power, sorry. If, we'll just take a, a quick go-around if we want to move it forward to the zoning commission. That's, that's really where I am. So.
Are we?
Yeah, please.
Okay, Ms. Langgalls? Who's Tammy?
Go back to Tammy.
All right.
Fran, excuse me.
Can't hear you.
You're not muted, but you're choppy.
I, Fran, I've lost a lot of what you said because on my screen it popped up.
We're going to do a roll call, Tammy, to see, for sending it to zoning.
Muting, and I'm losing.
We can only hear every other word that you're saying.
Yeah, let's, we'll start with, with Mr. Ferguson.
I'm for it.
Okay, Ms. Peniston?
Yes, please.
Ms. Shockley?
Same.
Mr. Backs and Dale?
Morning.
And Ms. DiMeglio?
Yes.
All right, you should be all set. We could wait for Tammy, see if Tammy's got better connections.
Tammy, can you hear us? Can, can you, I can't see everybody, so can, is she on?
She's on twice, but no audio. Tammy, can you hear us? Not, yes?
Hi, are you back? I'm back.
There you are. We're doing roll call to send this to the zoning commission, Tammy, if you're in favor or opposed. In favor. So we will send this to zoning for their next meeting to, we'll get that memo to them.
Okay, thank you. Next, the agenda is the, let me see, where's the agenda? I think it was the minutes. I think I lost the agenda. It's to approve the minutes of May twelve. Does anybody have any edits to the May twelve minutes?
Yes, I do. Well, I give my. But Fran, I do have a comment on them, if I may.
Go ahead.
At the very end, when we're talking about accessory dwelling units, I hate to go back there. Steve indicated that units are legal in the single-family zone, but not in the Todd East Norwalk, which surprised me because in the recommendations for the Todd East Norwalk, we recommended that accessory unit would be available or could be used or developed in craft workshops and the like, in the industrial zone and maybe some others, but definitely industrial zone, which runs along the railway line. So Brian, I don't think you should show, cast any light on that.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at what Steve had said, Brian, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay, maybe we can have that clarified. If we want to let the minutes go, that's fine, otherwise you'll say, in the current meeting, I've asked a question about accessory units in the Todd East Norwalk.
No, we're just, we'll just hold up on the minutes to our next meeting, Brian, okay? Till you have, till the answer, and we'll amend the minutes as, as necessary, okay? We good? Brian Baker, we're going to move the minutes to the next meeting.
That's fine. Okay, Tammy? Audio's not coming through.
I need, Tammy needs to move to a different room for the next meeting, we're better reception. I don't know, I'm going to move forward to the comments of Director Brian. You got any comments?
Nothing further.
Give yourself a raise, you're in charge tonight, okay? Okay, comments of commissioners, I'm just going to say again that merger talks are, are going forward. The ordinance committee of the common council, I believe, will be on their agenda again for next week. They're working on language for the joint commissions and how any of it will work. I, I have no, I have no, no, no input into, no, no, I have no clue. Or just, I, I've talked to the ordinance committee, as has Lou Shulman from zoning, and they're, so merger talks are going forward, and I'll leave it at that, okay? Anybody have any, any commissioners have any thoughts on anything?
I have a comment, this is Tamara. Fran, I listened to the nineteen May twenty-twenty-one zoning commission and their comments. And one of the comments was that zoning commission operates in a collegial fashion. And this was from the chairperson. To my understanding, that is not the way the planning commission operates. And I'd like for the record that I think we, as the planning commission, are very collegial and respectful of each other. And that we may have a difference of opinion and viewpoint, but we have always been collegial. So I, I would like that for the record, that was said by the chairperson of the zoning commission.
I, I'm, I'm flabbergasted by those comments, Tamara, I'm glad you brought it up. Now, these are, are you reading, you wrote those down or are you reading?
Fran, it is on nineteen May twenty-twenty-one zoning commission. And it is between three-thirty-two and three, three hours and thirty-two minutes to three-forty-two, where they talk about the zoning, where they talk about the planning and the, about the planning commission. I.
Tamara, Tamara, I second that. I do recall that. And, and, and you beat me to that, so thanks for bringing that up.
I particularly did not, uh, I, I, I was very surprised at it because I've never felt, during the short period I've been here, I've never felt that we were uncollegial. We definitely, because we come from different backgrounds, have different opinions. But that's the purpose of bringing people from different backgrounds to a city commission, so.
You know, Tam, my thoughts around that, I, I think that was towards the capital budget time. I, I don't know if that was the master plan side, the, the plan of conservation, or it was just our normal agenda. Because we, we, we hold a couple of different hats in, in different ways throughout, throughout the year. So I'm not sure what, that was kind of vague that that was brought up. I, I'd like to have some more clarity if it needs to be cleared up.
No, I, I'm, I'm, those words are very upsetting to me right now. And it doesn't matter what, and all of our meetings and our ups and downs, and we argue and all that. But we've always had collegiate, and so I'm, I'm taken aback by those comments that Mr. Shulman would, would utter those words. And so I, I will follow up, okay?
And there was another comment that he, he stated, this was at three-thirty-eight, that by combining the two commissions, it would be an opportunity to get rid of difficult people and dead wood. I, I just, I, I, I don't appreciate those comments either, so.
Wow.
Brian, Brian, Brian Baker, were you, were you a part of that, were you a part of that meeting, Brian? Do you recall those words?
I can listen to the, the request, it's posted, Steve, on YouTube page, and then there's the Zoom recordings, too.
No, no, I'm saying, were you a part of that conversation, that discussion, those comments?
Well, I was sitting as staff, but not part.
Do you recall those?
I will, I, I don't think, I, I think still, I don't know, I know Steve Kleppen was. So I'm going to have a conversation with Steve and say, I'll follow up on, I don't like any of these comments. And I'm, I'm appalled at that second comment that Tamara read. And so, thank you, thank you for bringing them up, okay?
Well, thank you for considering them.
Fran and Tamara, I think we're all with you. I mean, they all appear to me to be appalling comments from a, a local leader.
Agreed, appalling, yep. So taking the action to follow up, and I'll get back to you all. I don't know how that goes. Okay, anybody else?
So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Take it in.
Okay, thank you, everybody, be well.
Thank you for your time.
Good night, everybody.
Take care.
Bye-bye, bye-bye.